Pro tonight.
No comments.
Okay, we are live on Facebook and all our channels.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and council people. This is the March 9th City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. This will be an electronic meeting and I'll read what the governor's executive orders say. It says pursuant to the Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders, and they need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the March 9th, 2021 Gallatin Council Committee Meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Join the Zoom meeting at HTTPS slash slash US zero two web dot zoom dot US slash I slash eight four one eight two nine five five six eight eight, or dial one four seven zero two five zero nine three five eight, or one four seven zero three eight one two five five two, and enter webinar ID dot eight four one eight two nine five five six eight eight. Do I have an approval?
Most approved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call and approval of the February 9th minutes. Do we have any additions or deletions from that for those minutes?
Councilwoman George, the council needs to vote to approve this meeting to be electronically first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we do that in roll call same time, can't we?
Yes.
Perfect.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here, yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes, present.
Councilman Thanh.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton.
Yes, and present.
We have a vote of seven a zero nays and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll have the approval of the minutes. Do we have any additions or deletions to the February 9th minutes?
Most approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Thanh.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Motion carries seven a zero nays.
Thank you. Now we will move on to public recognition. This is a time for anyone to call in and speak about anything that's on the agenda. They have five minutes of comments and we ask that you hold to that time limit so we can move on. Do we have anyone that's interested in making comments?
Just a quick reminder, if you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function. If you mouse over the bottom of your screen, you'll see that if you're using a computer or using the app. If you're calling in by phone and I see a couple of callers, you will use star nine to raise your hand. I'll call your name and then you'll hit star six to unmute. Since this is a committee meeting, there is just one public recognition on agenda and non-agenda related items. And let's see, we do have one person has raised their hand, Andy Leith. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to let the council know that we are here to represent Bledsoe Springs. We do have a few things we'd like to add. Don't mind to do it now, or we can do it when you take the items up. It's whatever the will of the body is.
Thank you.
Let's wait till we take them up.
Okay, we'll move on.
Okay, we have another person, Victoria. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I live at 599 Douglas Lane. My name is Victoria Hagan. And I understand tonight you guys are going to be discussing the Randy Jones annexation out here Douglas Lane. I have a couple of concerns. First off, last week when the meeting was on, I believe it was March 2nd, many of my neighbors tried to get on and could not. So I don't know why, but I've spoken to, there was at least six or eight of them that could not get on. They tried calling in and hitting the star nine and they couldn't get on. They also couldn't get on the Zoom meeting as well. So I was the only one that was able to get on. I'm hoping some of them are on again tonight. I just wanted to state that with Randy Jones, first off, I guess what I want to say is, I understand you all live in this city. We live in the county out here because we chose to live in the county. I chose to buy property in the county but stay in Gallatin because I love Gallatin. I've been here for 30 plus years now. I love it out here. However, it's changing and I know it's going to change. My concern is if Mr. Jones is allowed to put the 171 homes in here, it's going to encroach on us that live in the county. And I would like for you to think about if you had bought land in the county and chose to want to live this particular lifestyle, how you would feel if you allowed someone to come in and change your lifestyle because the city has decided to allow him to annex into the city. I understand we need homes. Last meeting, I believe Ms. George, or when I spoke to Ms. George on the phone, she told me there was less than 20 houses on the market in Gallatin for sale. I've done some research and I have some realtor friends. Currently today, there are 240 homes for sale in Gallatin. So there are empty homes and there are empty apartments. I'm concerned about the schools. If the city wants to grow and be a city as in Nashville, maybe the city should consider putting in some schools to take care of all those children because us in the county are the ones that are going to be paying all the extra taxes for those schools that we need desperately right now. Being a bus driver, I know that. The buses are over full and we can't get bus drivers because the county can't pay them enough. I'm just, I just would really want you all to think about if you were the ones that were living out here, how you would feel. And I don't know if it can be done, if the meeting next week can be changed so that in April, when we can do it in person, we can show our support here because doing it Zoom, we cannot. I appreciate your time and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, caller with the cell phone ending in zero eight five.
I guess, this is Scott Goodwin. I live at 592 C Douglas Lane and I'm also calling in regards to the Twin Eagle Eagles Project. And I share some of the same concerns that Victoria had just mentioned. My understanding is the county went back to live meetings last month and I don't know that firsthand, but that's my understanding. I do know of several people that tried to get on the call over the last couple of weeks, at least seven different ones that were not even allowed to get in because of the system. And I really think it would be in everyone's best interest if this final decision was delayed until there can be an in-person meeting. So you guys really get a feel for everybody and people who are not shut out that maybe are not as computer literate or quite as up to speed on some of this and kind of have their voices not being heard. The next thing I want to mention, if this ends up being something that everyone's going to be pushing through, I really think that is, it's very prudent to make sure that when that's accessed on the Douglas Lane, that the road is left safer than it was when you guys started accessing it or that subdivision accesses it. And I think it would be a good idea and I really request that you guys require before you're willing to approve it, ask the builder to purchase five feet of property from where that enters onto Douglas Lane, just going towards 25. That's where most of the traffic would probably go. I know y'all say minimal amount will come on that road. But five feet would allow us to have a two-foot shoulder on each side of the road and keep it from becoming more dangerous and make it a safe scenario for everybody. There needs to be a turning lane required at 25 before that would be accessed. There needs to be a stoplight down there if we're really going to have a 600 to 700 home subdivision that has the ability to access that road. And I would also request that road that would connect to Douglas Lane, that there would be several speed bumps right before it connects onto Douglas that does not keep people from accessing it, but it kind of discourages it from being a major thoroughfare just to protect all parties involved. Emergency would be able to get in, people would be able to get out. And I think this would be in not just in Douglas Lane's best interest, but also the people in Twin Eagles, so we're protecting their safety. I kind of feel like we're kind of in no man's land out here. We're not part of the city, but we're wanting to be bumpered right up to. The city's not wanting to improve the road, not wanting to require anybody to improve the road. The county says we have no say here and people can do what they want to do. The highway department is emphatically saying they will not and do not anticipate in the future improving or dealing with that road. So this is one opportunity to get it right. And I do think, I understand the importance of growth and I understand you guys want to grow, but I do not feel like it's unreasonable for it to be responsible growth and infrastructure is taken into account. Several of you guys have mentioned there may be other properties down the road that would be developed as well. And I think the table really needs to be set now, so we're not making that road more dangerous. And I think this is an easy fix. If they're going to build another 170 homes, if he has to charge $1,000 more or whatever the amount is, 1,500, whatever the dollar amount is per home that he's going to build to pay for these improvements onto Douglas Lane, I think that's a prudent approach. And I'll tell you what, if he looked like that you guys were encouraging him to do the right thing and he did things to make the road more safe, I would probably become a little more of an advocate. I don't want it out here on the road at all, but at least then I feel like that you guys are making sure that our best interest is taken care of. And I strongly urge you guys to please require that that is addressed in part of the decision. Somebody told me that he probably would not do that, but if you guys make that contingent on this being approved, I think this is a way to make it where it's good for people in Twin Eagles. It's a safer scenario for people on Douglas Lane and I would feel a whole lot better about the whole scenario. And I appreciate you guys hopefully giving that strong consideration to take care of that.
Thank you. June Hedge, go ahead.
Yes, this is June Hedge and I live at 604 A Douglas Lane. You know, this is, and I think I spoke last week, this is a very dangerous road. It's narrow. There's no shoulder on either side of the road, even up there, you know, where you're talking about, you know, that that's going to be directly affected with this, the vehicles and so forth coming out of the subdivision. When a larger than a passenger vehicle comes towards you, you have to slow way down because you never know if there's going to be enough room to pass. And like I said, there is no shoulder of the road that you, it's a ditch on both sides. The speed limit I think is 30, but most vehicles don't go that fast because the road conditions just, they do not merit that. But, and also I think another consideration that I hope that you'll make is, you know, with talking about, you know, the other project, they had a major project and certainly bigger than this is the Bowles property. I mean, this is a tremendous number of houses that you're advocating building and the infrastructure is just not here. And I mean, I think in most of, most of the people in the neighborhood, and I think probably all of you have, you have seen too many areas where it has been overbuilt with not enough consideration as to the infrastructure that's going to be required. And I think in some of the others have mentioned there that you have no plans of increasing the fire protection out here or adding police protection. In other words, just be careful that you don't grow beyond the means of the council to be able to handle what, you know, what's coming and coming quickly apparently. It just, I just hope that you'll consider all of those aspects and that you just don't, don't let Gallatin become like another, some of these other places like just where there's apartments all over the place, numerous people. The quality of life in Gallatin is too good. You know, like Reader's Digest, you know, had picked Gallatin as an extremely pleasant place to live and it is. But when councils and city government lets people build just as long as they'll build with no forethought or strong forethought into what's required, the building is the first step, but yet it has to go, you have to think, you have to think a bigger picture than that. That's not, that's not the end and the all of it. But anyway, I appreciate you letting me speak and I just, I just, I appreciate the fact that the council is willing to hear people and to get our views on it and please consider these things. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hedge.
Last call. For anyone else who'd like to speak and use the raise your hand function now, please. And I believe that's everyone.
Awesome. Thank you. So let's move on to the agenda and this is for Mayor's comments.
Thank you. I do have some business for the end of the meeting, but right now I'll just say a belated happy birthday to Chuck Stewart and an early happy birthday to Councilman Thanh. I'm not missing somebody else. I don't have my list these days.
How about you? How about you?
How about you, Mayor Paige Brown?
I survived that. Anyway, get back to the meeting and I'll drop in at the end of the meeting some other business as well. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to the agenda items. The number one agenda item is for Mr. McCord.
Bill, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I covered my screen up with multiple screens and I had to close them out, so I'm glad I'm here. This first item is a request for rezoning of 35 acres or 35 and a half acres, excuse me, located on the south side of Hartsfield Pike and on the north side of Cairo Road. It's just beyond or just to the east of the MapCo Station. It's located on Highway 25. So this map here shows you the property. It has been used agriculturally. It's probably maybe the closest farm into town right now, one of a few. And there is a house on the property now and a couple of barns. And again, it's now zoned R15 and the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to PNC Plan Neighborhood Commercial and RTN PRD Medium Density Residential to develop a subdivision and small commercial center. The plan of development associated with this would show the properties on the west side of the property adjacent to Hartsfield Pike and immediately to the east of the existing convenience store to be rezoned PNC Plan Neighborhood Commercial. And I'll explain a little bit about the details of that. And then the balance of the property, the most, most of the property, 26 of the 35 acres would be developed into 103 single-family homes. And again, single-family detached homes with street system that would connect both to Hartsfield Pike and Cairo Road and to Cottage Drive. So the applicant then is showing a number of buffer yards that would be constructed, a narrow buffer yard along Hartsfield Pike and a buffer yard that would separate the planned neighborhood commercial from the backyards of some of the single-family homes. There would be common open spaces which was required in the PNC District and that would be extended through the center of the property. You can see that a couple of proposed stormwater facilities would be located on the extreme south end of the property adjacent to the CSX Railroad line and a stormwater retention pond would be located on the east end of the property also adjacent to the CSX line. Again, this is a similar view, I think the colored view here with the, showing the green space and so forth is a little easier to read and distinguish, but this, this also is the same alignment which will show a slough that extends through the center of the property which has an intermittent, serves as an intermittent creek and there would be buffer yards associated with that. This map shows you a little better rendition of the open space tracks that would be created as part of the plan. And then back to the original plan here. The homes that would be constructed would be, again, single-family homes with a variety of designs, two and one-story homes with two-car garages. You see the, the battening board or actually in this case it'd be cementous fiber hardy board material with brick and stone facades and some additional types of units. The commercial, these would be some of the, essentially they're named after trees, various models that they would provide. And then we have the PNC zone portions would include your typical retail that you see now. Now, one thing that you do see here in the top corner is a potential generic looking drive-through restaurant. And one of the things that we wanted to protect this area from is automobile-related activities that you might see in PNC. So the applicant has agreed to limit the commercial uses to those that are consistent with MRO zoning, professional office zoning and low-intensity retail and not necessarily the drive-through types of restaurants. So that would be unique to the master plan that they would create is that limiting the, even though it's PNC zoning, it would be limited to only certain types of commercial uses. The planning commission did review this request and after discussion voted to approve this rezoning and master development plan.
Bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, but no matter if we change the zoning on this property or not, they're still approved for 103 homes regardless if we change the zoning or not. The only thing we're doing is changing the zoning to allow them to have more density per acre so they can have some retail on the front. Is that correct?
Well, they are also asking for the low-intensity commercial. One of the reasons that we wanted the limitations is because it's shown on our comp plan for suburban residential established. And to put the higher intensity commercial activities would not be consistent with that character area. So they agreed to the somewhat restricted commercial uses on those out parcels. The property is owned R15 now, which is about, allows about development of about three units per acre. So if they took the balance of 35 units and roughly 35 acres and got about three units, that'd be about 105 units.
We're here, we're here, they're trying to do four units an acre instead of three because they're trying to get the commercial in. Is that correct?
Well, it's that plus the open space kind of takes the place of larger lot sizes, so.
I just want to point out that they're getting that zoning, but it's the same amount of houses. No matter what zoning we do, they're going to get the same amount of houses no matter what.
Are very close to it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCord, I have a question. You said that the drive-through is not going to be used for a restaurant. What would it be used for?
Well, they, they wouldn't use, let me get that picture back up. They just wouldn't install or construct a building like that for a drive-through restaurant. You could have a walk-in restaurant or the house that's there now. You could have that converted into a restaurant and that'd be just fine. The house does have a brick wall in front of it and this plan doesn't show, I don't believe this plan shows preservation of their brick wall. That's something you might want to consider. This does show a landscape strip which is required by our code and that wall could be constructed in or placed simply in that landscape strip and left as is, although they would probably need to widen the driveway to be able to accommodate two-way traffic.
Thank you.
Bill, does this, does this reflect that the number of lots has been changed to 101? And also, you know, the planning commission, we asked them to have at least 50% of the homes have 35% brick and stone and that didn't, the pictures aren't different from what we were shown earlier. Has that been changed?
That's included in the Exhibit B. In your agenda package, you have a draft ordinance that is part of zoning ordinance. And Exhibit B describes the master plan and the conditions of approval of that master plan. It also, the condition six is to add a plan note indicating that the front facade of no less than 50% of the home shall be constructed with at least 35% brick and stone materials. I realize that's a tongue twister and that's going to mean whoever's doing the review of each of the homes in there is going to have to keep track of how many homes have, meet that criteria, but that is correct. And they did remove, I think, their proposal removed lot 58 and I believe 33 because of its proximity to the drainage buffer.
Thank you. And I didn't think about that rock wall before, but is it, is it one of our historic ones?
I don't know how old it is, but it would be located with the exception of, it would be located in that front landscape area and could be retained.
I would definitely want to see it retained because I think those rock walls give a lot of Gallatin's character to our whole city.
I do.
It's cemented together. It's not just stacked stone and so it's a little more sturdy than some of the other ones that you have in rural areas.
If I may, I recall us, I either heard it on the planning commission or I heard it discussed at a previous meeting, but I think it was said that that wasn't deemed to be an historic wall. Like Mr. McCord said, it's not stacked stone. It is a beautiful wall, but I think that house probably dates from the 30s or 40s and the wall the same.
I would still want to keep it.
Yeah, I think the house was built in 1919 according to tax records.
If you go back that far then.
Mr. McCord, I understand there'll be like three exits out of this subdivision.
Yes.
Cottage Drive and Hartsfield Pike and Cairo Road, is that correct?
There's a road A here in the northeastern portion of the property and then a connect to Hartsfield Pike. And road B will connect down to Cairo Road and also connect Cottage Drive. And then road D, which is a little cul-de-sac, just connects into Cottage Drive.
Okay.
So there's only a few lots around road D there. Cottage Drive exists now, which has those duplexes on the east side of the property.
Bill.
Go ahead.
The houses that are facing Cottage Drive, how will they be facing as far as frontage or backage to the homes that already exist on Cottage Drive?
They will face and have their driveways facing Cottage Drive. So they'll be directly across the street with the front of the house facing the front of the units on Cottage Drive with the exception of this one, which this unit, if you can see my cursor, that unit faces onto Rogers Cottage Circle, but it's a corner lot, so.
And what percentage of green space did you say?
Oh, y'all making me work hard tonight.
What's the good pay for it?
26.1% is green space, which is, 25 is the minimum required in the RTN PRD. So slightly more than, and it'd be even a little bit more than that if they take lot 58 and lot 33 out of it.
Which they said they were going to do.
Yes, there, again, the description we have in the staff report includes 101 lots.
It does.
Both can extend it to council.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Thanh, second.
Okay, thank you.
We need a councilman Fan.
So we have Councilman Overton and Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call please, Ms. Kettrell. Ms. Kettrell?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Thang?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven Eyes, Zero Nays.
Thank you. Mr. McCord, we come back to you on, on item number two.
Let's go down here. Uh, items number two and three I will present together. Uh, I may also include part of item number four in here. This is a request to annex a forty-seven acre roughly parcel of land and adjacent railroad right-of-way located on the north side of Hartspole Pike. East and southeast of the Gallatin Industrial Center and west of the Sunny Mead Subdivision. Uh, the city is um, currently the boundary is this blue line that I'm showing on the screen to the west. And since the annexation of Hartspole Pike out to uh, the new gateway drive extension that's under construction, that roadway was annexed into the city about a, less than a year ago. And uh, this property is also contiguous at, at that point now as well as uh, where it is adjacent to the Gallatin Industrial Center. Now, this next slide here is a little something a little different that you haven't seen. But I think it's important to demonstrate, since we are entertaining several annexations, including this one, about how far some of these properties are from the center of the city. And, and, and the shape of the city as it is now. So uh, this, this concentric circles are showing the distance from the center of town here, actually City Hall, which is right there in the middle there, you might be able to see that little green box. And then each one of these is, represents with the exception of the first mile, the rest of these lines represent every half mile out equal distant from the city. And of course, the city limit boundary uh, is demonstrated by the red lines that you see here. Of course, the, the blue line is Cumberland River. And uh, the various creeks that extend off from the river up to uh, the foothills. Uh, so you can see how far it is away from town depending on how, and how the town's developed over the years and are annexed. And that this property is located right where my cursor is, so it is right about just shy of three miles, about three miles actually. Uh, the three mile circle goes through the middle of the property from the center of town. So you can see how much more of the city is, is more than three miles outside the city, including the property that was annexed earlier this year or last year, the Facebook property, which is as far as four and a half to five miles outside of the city. So um, this is another uh, map, it's very similar to that one. And it shows the urban growth boundary and proximity to the city boundaries as well. And it shows the street system on there a little better, uh, same, same data. So the applicants are requesting the annexation of this property as well as a plan of service. Now, if you want me to, I'll go ahead and describe the zoning and master plan that's also shows, associated with that, which is part of, okay. And that's part of item number four. So I'll, I'll get into that and then come back to the other. Uh, again, this is the forty-seven roughly acres of property and, and this, this is uh, laying on its side, if you will. So north is to the right and Hartspole Pike is over on the left side of the screen here. And this old former uh, L and N Railroad right-of-way is on the west side of the property. And what we've determined is that the railroad formally abandoned that right-of-way, so half of the right, that right-of-way is ceded to the adjacent property owner, the other half is ceded to the other property owners. And the city owns two of these lots, so as part of this request, we uh, for annexation at least, we end zoning, uh, we are asking that the city's portion be zoned of the half of the right-of-way IR, which is the zoning that's on the industrial part. The applicants uh, are requesting rezoning, the property was rezoned, it was by the county to rural residential, which is a forty thousand square foot lot prior to that, and the county's own that back in July of twenty twenty. Prior to that, it was, is located in the city of Gallatin Planning Region and was zoned R fifteen. Now, uh, R fifteen again is a fifteen thousand square foot lot and um, that would yield about a hundred and thirty-five units gross at uh, for a fifteen thousand square foot lot on a forty-seven acre piece of property. But the applicants have proposed this master plan and uh, R eight zoning with PRD, which is um, single-family residential. All lots would be uh, single-family homes. You may recall previously uh, that there was a proposal to uh, have a mix of single-family homes and townhomes with a previous zoning request that was presented to council, but y'all didn't uh, get around to voting on that. Uh, at that last plan, uh, there was a hundred and eighty-three units proposed and including townhome units and single-family homes. But this proposal is strictly just single-family homes. Uh, there's also a substantial amount of open space that would be provided and include, in addition to the railroad right-of-way, which would be open space. All of this area north of a creek that bisects the property would be left in open space. And then buffer yards would be in open space tracks adjacent to the Sunny Mead subdivision and the other adjacent properties that are to the south uh, along Hartspole Pike and to the southwest. So it'd be buffered by uh, landscaping and, and those required buffer yards, most of which contain tree lines now. The uh, and, and then the drainage system would be um, installed of course, and it would drain to this creek here and then we of course have to meet our stormwater requirements. This is a, just another rendition of the plan that gives you a better idea of where the stormwater system would be in many of the open space tracks. They proposed to build uh, brick homes on the property. And these are some samples of what some of those homes would look like. One thing that you need to be aware of is that these homes are, are showing uh, side and or rear garage entry. They are proposing front garage entry as opposed to rear side garage entry. Again, that's uh, another rendition of the plan, I'll leave that one up there for discussion purposes. But the total number of lots is now down to one hundred and thirty-five, which is consistent with what they had with the previous zoning that the city established before the county changed that zoning. One thing that I do want to bring to your attention also is that, and you, I think each of you may have received this as an email. If not, we will, will provide that to you. Uh, perhaps at the first reading is a, a, a letter that was provided by uh, signed by Mr. Marshall Cook, who's an attorney with Bone McAllister, uh, addressing the issues of the annexation and the zoning and preliminary master development plan. And essentially it's a reiterating the findings of the um, city planning department. Now, one last thing I want to mention before we uh, move to discussion is that this is the same property that was presented last summer for annexation and zoning. At that time, as I mentioned earlier, they had proposed a zoning and a master plan that allowed for a hundred and eighty-three lots. The planning commission recommended approval of that annexation and that master plan to the city council and then of course it went to city council and y'all did not take action to move the plan of service forward, so the other items just kind of uh, uh, I guess out on the vine, so to speak. With this plan, the planning commission did review, uh, took public comment and of course it's a hundred and thirty-five lots. And uh, zoning back then was R six that was requested, now we have R eight with the more open space. And uh, the planning commission did not recommend annexation and rezoning however. So there's, you might perceive that as conflicting um, recommendation that they approved a, a more dense plan with a mixture of housing types. And more recently, they did not recommend approval, but the planning department, we do recommend approval of this uh, annexation and zoning.
Mr. George, if I could, could I ask, could I, we should spin the rules and let Andy Lee speak on this, he's, was coming in at our public comments, we told him we'd let him speak when it got to this point, so I'd like to see him speak right now.
Yeah, I have a question, but I'll wait until he speaks, thank you. Mr. Leach, you're here?
Andy Lee.
Yes ma'am, I'm, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I, as I said earlier at the preliminary part of it, the design team here, uh, Mr. Marty Cook is online as well, uh, so if Mr. Hansel could um, give him the opportunity to speak. And there've been a lot of questions, a lot of concern brought up about the traffic, the traffic study, the traffic improvements, we also have the traffic engineer here tonight so that council can hear directly from the traffic engineer as well. So at this time, I'm going to say to uh, to Mr. Cook, let him give his presentation.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Andy, thank you uh, folks, appreciate your time tonight, appreciate your consideration of this project. Um, just a few things to reiterate what Mr. McCord said and, and also set forth um, our position on this, as, as many of you will recall, as Mr. McCord said, this project was before you all last year. Um, however, since that time, there have been some significant changes both in the annexation in this area as well as to the plan that is being uh, presented and proposed. As far as annexation goes, since this project was in front of you all last year, uh, the contiguous properties around this proposed area have been annexed into the city. So we're now uh, looking at a situation where property on all sides contiguous to this project are now annexed into the city, uh, which our position is if, if this property were left in the county with city property all around it, it would create issues for uh, first responders and, and other folks and, and confusion as to whether this is really county or city project, prop, property. And so for that reason, we believe the annexation is appropriate uh, and within the statutory requirements for annexation to, to create a, a continu- contiguous area of city property that can be serviced under the plan of service that has been proposed um, and, and would make the most sense. As far as the plan itself that's being proposed, uh, a, as Mr. McCord said, there have been significant changes to this plan as well. It was before you all last year and the developer uh, listened and made significant changes based on recommendations of this body. In fact, the changes were so significant that the city attorney did recommend um, that, that, that the project go back through um, the planning commission, which, which we have done. And, and, and so some of those changes are a, a significant decrease in the density. Um, the townhouses have been removed, it is now all single-family homes, less than three per acre. Uh, there's significant open space, uh, much more than is required and, and there, there's a greenway, the developer is, i- is even willing to place some picnic or park area in this open space if, if, if that is desired. Um, I, I, I think the other thing that's important to mention is that as, as we all know, there is, there are significant jobs coming to this, this area of town. And uh, this, this is an opportunity to provide workforce housing, attainable housing for the employees that, that will be coming to this area of town. There are going to be several floor plan options available from potentially two-bedroom all the way up to, to four-bedroom homes. Uh, these homes will be in the mid two-fifty price range, which is a, a a, a attainable price range that is needed uh, in Gallatin and in particular, in this area of town. As you saw from the photographs, uh, we, we have agreed to increase the brick percentage. Um, these are very, very nice looking houses and will be uh, opportunity for owner occupied not, nice homes in, in this area for the employees that will soon be uh, working uh, ver- very close to this property. Uh, at, at the planning commission, as Mr. Leath mentioned, uh, one neighbor and then one resident who I don't believe was, was a neighbor, but both of them raised some traffic concerns as well as uh, Councilwoman Love raised some traffic concerns as well. We had a traffic study done last year, we have had that traffic study revised to reflect the uh, new number of homes. And we also wanted to make it very clear that the traffic study has taken into account that when it was originally done, it was during COVID. Um, but our traffic engineer has made the appropriate calculations to show that traffic study as with um, normal traffic flow patterns. And because that uh, was an issue at planning, um, we have our traffic engineer, Mr. Rich Phillips here and available today to answer any questions uh, about his study, about the recommended improvements um, that, that he is recommending, and so he's available to do that. And then uh, Andy Leath is also available to discuss any technical aspects of the property as it relates to uh, density, open space, those, those type things uh, as well. So we're, we're all here and, and ready to answer any questions that you may have, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Um, I have a question, uh, the, from what I understand, the price points are going to be in the two-fifty to two-sixty price point range, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and um, I was looking at the floor plans, it looks to me as if those plans are two bedrooms. What am I missing?
Uh, I, I can let Mr. Lee or Mr. Edwards address that, but it's, it's my understanding that most of the floor plans will be three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. But there may be some on the, the lower end of the spectrum that are, that are two-bedroom and then some of the larger homes uh, may even be up to four. But most.
Okay, I, I guess we don't have all the floor plans.
No ma'am, you, you do not have every floor plan and that's something that we can get to you all before the next meeting and get it in your meeting packet to have a, a better complete uh, set of house plans for you to review.
No, that's great because on, I was thinking two bedrooms wouldn't cut it, but three, three to four bedrooms, that's perfect, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. George, I got a question or two.
Absolutely.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, this subdivision is just, it's got me puzzled because a few months ago, this went through the planning commission with fifty something more units and townhomes. And we asked them to take it out and they did. You got an all-brick home and then you go right down the street and we just approved a subdivision with over a hundred homes as well, there's thirty-five percent brick, that's got more density on that subdivision than this subdivision does. And yet, we're questioning whether we want to approve the subdivision or not, you got all brick. I mean, there's just, it, it doesn't make sense how the planning commission would approve the old subdivision and not approve this one when they took all the townhomes out, they made all brick homes. Something doesn't make sense here guys, I don't know what it is, but it just doesn't make sense.
I can tell you what, what that was all about.
Tell me what that is.
That was the traffic there, we started, uh, we didn't.
Your, your other subdivisions are a mile down the road, what's the difference in the traffic there and here?
You mean down by that?
Yeah.
This one is by that light at Airport Road where ba- it backs up for long, long, long way and people come over a hill behind that, don't see that the people are stopped and they ram into them. We had bunches of people call and, and talk about that and all the different wrecks. Up there where we just sent to council, there's not a light and there's not a hill. And it's also already uh, in the city. Now, I'm thrilled that they took out those townhomes and put in fewer uh, family homes. I just would like to know what the um, what is, what the improvements for the traffic are going to be that, that were mentioned.
Um, based on the traffic study, the traffic study, now let me show. Based on the traffic study, the traffic study, now let me show you the drawing here. What they will be doing is installing a center turn lane that will accommodate left turns at the Westerly Street intersection. And I believe that is Robertson Lane, maybe, if I'm not mistaken. So there will be a wider, the street will be widened at this location to accommodate left-turning vehicles, which would be the predominant movement in and out of the subdivision. The traffic study also indicated that there would be all turning movements, not just the intersection, but all turning movements would operate at level service D or better. And as a matter of fact, only one turning movement would operate at level service D. And that would be Hillside Lane, I think it is, is here, for the in-the-morning peak hour, left turns from Hillside Lane onto Hartsfield Pike, westbound would operate level service D. And level service D and/or E is generally considered to be acceptable level of service for most communities. This would remain as an unsignaled intersection. And of course, they would also have this intersection here, but it would not carry the same volume of traffic in and out of the subdivision. So Nick would probably want to weigh in on the impacts of of trips on Hartsfield Pike and other area roadways, including Airport Road, Hartsfield Pike intersection. But generally, it's not going to degrade the level of service beyond this time. So again, I want to reiterate that the previous zoning the city had on the property was allowed for basically the same number of units as what they're proposing at this time. So I also think that Andy had mentioned that their traffic engineer is available to answer questions.
That's
Who I was actually directing that question to as to what improvements you had in mind for easing up the traffic problems.
Plans for another red light down Hartsfield Pike, maybe a mile and a half on down.
I think muted.
Answered Mr. Fann's question, I believe, when warranted, it's possible that a traffic signal would be installed at the new Gateway Drive intersection with Hartsfield Pike, which is less than a mile to the east of this site.
I think that would help.
Definitely.
Mr. George, I make the motion. We move two, three, and four on the council.
We have a second.
A second.
Thank you. That's Councilman Overton and Councilman John Alexander. Thank you.
So now open for discussion.
Two, three, and four, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And open for discussion.
I would like to say one thing. At first, I wrote, at first, I voted against this property. I was worried about the traffic and the density. I know and I was proud that they pulled the townhomes off that property. Also, they took it down to 135 lots. I questioned Andy Leath about it back when we first voted on it. I voted no. Andy told me, says, Sean, I want you to go ride out and check out the property. I went out on the property. I drove the property. I drove to the back of it, seen it went right up to the industrial park. At the time, I felt that it was kind of in the countryside, and I hated to see that go away. But once I rode out to the property and seen that, I knew that this would be developed one day. And to me, the real estate, I mean, the developer has tried to bend over backwards. He took out the townhouses. He reduced the density. And I've changed my mind. At this time, I do support this project.
I've asked several times, I'd just like to hear what the traffic engineer's improvements for that are going to be that were alluded to earlier.
I thought Bill just covered that.
I thought that he said we had a traffic engineer that was standing by that had some things in, some other things in mind.
He is, this is Mr. Cook, our traffic engineer, Mr. Phillips, is, I think, is on the Zoom. If there's some way that he could be unmuted and off allow in.
He's unmuted. Go ahead.
This is Richard Phillips. The recommendations were adequately described in terms of what is planned for the project. Let me back up just for a second here. And as it's been mentioned several times, there's the proposals for now is for 135 lots, single-family homes. This revised study with the fewer units that are going to be constructed, there are now, it's going to be projected to be compared to the previous proposal, 556 fewer trips per day, 35 fewer trips during the AM peak hour, and 40 fewer trips in the PM peak hour. To touch on what Mr. Cook had alluded to in terms of doing this original study during COVID, we conducted our traffic counts in May of 2020. And we compared those counts to 2019 counts that were collected by T-Dot just on State Route 25, just west of Airport Road. And what we found was that the counts in the AM peak had decreased by 39%, and the counts in the PMP had decreased by 27%. And so we took the counts that we collected and in the AM multiplied them by a factor of 1.39 to overcome that 39% decrease and 1.27 in the PM to overcome the 27% decrease. And from there, I'd also like to point out that at the intersection of Airport Road and State Route 25, this development will add about 4% more traffic than is there currently in the AM peak and about 5% in the PMP. And to put things in a little bit of perspective, that the number of AM trips that are generated by this development will be about 100 and 135 in the PM. And so we're talking about roughly two trips a minute, a little bit more than that in the PMP. Obviously, this is, you know, not a particularly large residential development. And then to reiterate what the findings of the study are is that we recommended putting in 150-foot eastbound left turn lane at the western access to this driveway that is opposite Hillsdale. And that that improved section would tie into a two-way left turn lane that is heading toward, back toward the west. And it would make a basically a continuous three-lane section from Airport Road to the west access for this property.
Thank you. I think Hillsdale is one of the main problem areas, so that hopefully will help that area. And I feel a lot more satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Any more discussion?
Let's vote.
Okay, let's move for roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I say Ronays?
Thank you. Okay, we will go on to item number five, which also formed Mr. McCord.
Hey, moving right along here. This next request is a proposal for a amended preliminary master development plan called Winston Place. The current master plan for this property located on the east side of Highway 109, just north of East Camp Creek and south of Red River Road, was approved for Long Halla Baptist Church a few years ago. The church has decided they're not interested in developing this property for their church, and they're willing to sell it. It is zoned MRO. There is no need to change the zoning, so it already has MRO zoning. And all they're asking for is an approval of a preliminary master development plan for a subdivision on the property to contain 68 lots. It is just about 20 acres of land, so we're looking at a little more than three units per acre. This is all single-family homes, roughly 6,000 square foot lots. It would contain an open space track adjacent to the creek, which is within the flood zone. And that would be able to accommodate a future greenway segment that would extend along the length of East Camp Creek. Access would be gained from a new street extending across, let's see if I can get a that's a little better depiction there, across Highway 109 from the Eagle Creek subdivision and be a Wedgewood Drive extension. Eventually, Wedgewood Drive could be extended up to Red River Road and tie into a proposed street that will be extended on through the Bowles property if that project is approved. Again, we're talking all single-family homes. This is very similar in size and scale to those previous proposals that you've seen. This rendering shows you where the open space tracks will be located in proximity to the proposed lots in the street system. It would result in an extension of Summerland Avenue, which is a dead-end street currently, and extend Summerland through the development and ties into two new streets that would be built in addition to the Wedgewood extension. Again, this rendering shows the area that's in the flood zone that would be, again, modified slightly in this area, lots 45 and 46 to elevate those outside the flood zone. The architecture for the homes, generally, you're seeing brick facades with front-end loaded garages or front-end garages from the street, generally mostly two-story homes. They do have some one-story models. The planning commission did review this request for an amended master plan and recommended approval of the master plan amendment.
Bill, what does that Summerland Street go to? Where does it come from?
Goes out to Red River Road right now, and it just goes down there in dead ends in the stub.
Okay.
There's a temporary cul-de-sac there now, and it'd be just extended around.
Okay.
Bill, I have in my notes that there is, from lots 44 through 53, is marked as a critical lot, and a floodplain analysis would be needed to be presented to the city.
Yes, that's not necessarily needed for zoning purposes. The floodplain line, as I indicated on the previous slide, shows that the floodplain extends slightly into proposed lots 45 and 46. They would most likely do a map amendment to change that flood boundary line and possibly compensate in other areas of the open space track. So that would be something that would be addressed at the final master development plan stage.
Thank you.
Does it motion?
Motion to send it on.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, so that was John D.
Yes.
And Jimmy Overton. Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Kitchell, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I say Ronays?
Thank you. We're moving on to, oh, Bill McCord.
Hey, this next item is a presentation. There is no need to necessarily vote, although you may want to, you could vote to accept, I suppose. This is a presentation of the annexation study for the Bowles property, which is moving through council now for consideration of annexation, plan of service, and rezoning. This is a 655-acre parcel of land. And I think y'all are well aware of what they're proposing to do. We did an analysis based on the initial master plan that was submitted and considered by the council. I did want to point out, because I want to get the opportunity to mention that at the second reading, there is a plan that you would want to substitute for the one that was recommended by the planning commission to apply the plan, which includes additional lands for, not additional, just a shifting of the lands for the planned business park and the mixed-use area. And that was requested by the Economic Development Agency. So I just want to remind you of that. At the second reading, you'll want to substitute the EDA recommended plan for one approved by the planning commission. Not significant changes, but just some minor changes. With that, we did a detailed analysis of this development based on the proposed plan that was approved by the planning commission. And in summary, and you have the report there in your agenda package, but in summary, we had determined that this annexation, if developed under this development plan, would have a net benefit to the city, at least in the 10-year timeframe, when expected development delivery was to occur. Essentially, we project that in that 10-year period that estimated revenue would be about $58 million as it develops and fully develops. And expenditures would be, we're talking that public expenditures would be $43 million roughly. So we found that this annexation is certainly financially feasible and a benefit to the city.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Do we have to do anything with this, Ms. McCollie?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Presentation.
All right, so we'll go on to presentation number seven. Mr. McCord.
Okay. Okay, similarly to the annexation study for the Bowles Farm, we did also conducted one for Twin Eagles Phase 15. Twin Eagles Phase 15, of course, you're aware, is located on the west side of the current Twin Eagles subdivision and is subject to some of the comments that we received earlier in the meeting. The applicant proposes to develop a Phase 15, and they break in Phase 15 into a number of different phases. And this includes 171 single-family lots on a property that would be zoned MU. We, again, conducted this annexation study similarly to the other ones that we've conducted. And as we've found with most of these types of subdivisions with this density, that it's essentially revenue-neutral, meaning that the city is not going to derive more revenue than the total expenses necessary to serve the subdivision as determined in a 10-year timeframe. So that's typical, though. That's what we're seeing with almost all new development now. There is no commercial aspects to this subdivision. It's all residential.
I would like to say something about this. I believe it was Mrs. Hagan that brought up the fact that there were hundreds of homes available for sale in Gallatin. I would like to state that there are 35 active homes in Gallatin and 12 between 400,000 and 500,000, and only four under the price point of 300,000. So I'd like to just clarify that because she said there was hundreds. So I'd like to just clarify that, because she said there was hundreds. Are there any other comments about this?
Yours. You might be confused with county and the city.
I can't hear.
She might be confused with county.
You're muted, Steve.
He says you may be confused with the county and the city. That meaning the county, not the city, so.
Either way, we're approving a lot tonight to be voted on next week, so that'll add a lot.
It won't be soon enough.
Item number eight.
Item number eight, thank you. Oh wait, do we have to do anything with that?
No.
Just presentation. Sorry, thank you. Item number eight, that would be through Public Works. So who is here to talk about that?
It is Zach Wilkinson with, for Public Works. So it's been, I guess, over a week ago, we got the bids in for the fire and police training facility. And just if y'all recall, this project was designed, I think, about two and a half, three years ago. It was designed in two phases, phase one being a gun range and phase two being the pad for future Fire Station Six, along with a large training area for the fire department. So we got the bids in. The low bidder was Scotty's Contracting and Stone. The bid for phase one, and this is just for the dirt work, the mass grading was two hundred and five thousand dollars and seventy-eight, seven hundred eighty-one cents. And then the bid for phase two was one point six million dollars. So with that being said, and the numbers came in about where we expected it to come in, and that's just a base bid. There is an additional add-on for any rock they encounter. And the number, that, that'll be paid on a per-yard basis. We don't have a geotech study for the site, so it is somewhat of a guess, but I felt comfortable that with the overall project budget, we'll be able to handle any of the rock that we encounter on the site with the, like, their seven hundred thousand dollars that's been earmarked for the project. That being said, I guess there's a resolution prepared allowing the mayor to sign the contract with Scotty's Contracting.
Approved.
Second.
I would like to say something, Ms. George. Ms. George, can I say something?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Hey, Zach, and I'm great, because I've really been after this for a lot of years, trying to get this in for the police department to have a place to train. I appreciate the hard work and effort that you've given. One thing I want to ask you is, back in discussions, I know there was a, are we going to stick with that plan as far as putting the gun range exactly where they want it? Or are we able to shift it around anyway, like you and I discussed? They could possibly be a more beneficial area for us, or we can actually do it a little cheaper. Have you discussed any of that with people that's being awarded the contracts?
Well, I mean, ultimately, if we, if we shift around where and how it's done, I mean, because the site was designed with both the fire piece of it and the gun range trying to accommodate it. We, I mean, we could look at it from a standpoint of just trying to get the gun range on there and trying to find the most efficient way to do that. It, it would require a whole rework of the grading plan. I mean, it's a pretty intense grading plan. It's not something that we can really do on the fly. I mean, but something we could do, and then it would have to be rebid. Just, it would be, if there's any kind of substantial change to it.
You understand where I'm coming from. I know there's been several people to go out to the site right here, and several of them said, you know, this site is just too complicated, too challenging to have the fire department and the police on the same property. We've had those discussed. The only thing I'm saying, I don't want to throw a wrinkle in this at all, by all means. But certainly, if we can take an advantage of the situation of moving something around or something to accommodate us and save some money, I would like to see that done. But that's, that's where I'm at with this. I, I know that Facebook is general generous enough, so was DPR with offering to give us the gravel and field that we need, and they even offered to put in our buildings and do some of the concrete work and stuff like that. And I know this is work that we need to do first, so I'm on board with it, but you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the council's desire to, I mean, it's essentially a redesign to look at the site with, with in mind, and we're just trying to get the gun range, and that's it. But that's something we can, we can do. It will require some design work.
I don't want to delay it long. If we, if we're going to last for a long time, I'm ready to move it on. So let's just, let's move it on if we need to.
I'm fine with that, Jimmy, that if we can sneak something in or move something around, I'm fine with that.
But let's move on with it right now and let her sign the contract.
I have a question.
Okay, so that's, this is.
We're just needing to send the resolution to council.
So moving on to item number nine, resolution.
Now, we've got.
We need to vote on it.
We've got to vote, let the mayor sign it.
We had a first and a second on it, so we're in discussion. So if there's any more discussion.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yeah.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
He's absent.
Looks like.
Got to go somewhere.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six I see Ronays.
Thank you. Now we're on to item number nine, resolution on accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin. Revere at Hidden Creek, Nick Tuttle.
Thank you, Ms. George. Yeah, this is a resolution for accepting improvements at Hidden Creek, or the Revere at Hidden Creek. They're the new apartment complex, and there's a spine road that runs down the middle there near the station camp schools. And Springdale Lane and Sweet Briar Way are the, the roadways that we would be accepting. This was recommended unanimously by our planning commission last month.
Ms. George, I'm sorry, but Mr. Kellogg's got his hand up. I don't know if he wants to speak on that last item or not.
Oh, I don't see that.
He's got his hand raised.
Okay, Mr. Kellogg?
I do not, I know how to raise my hands.
Okay, it's raised, but go ahead, sorry.
Maybe he's just waving at somebody.
Thank you. Mr. Tuttle, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Questions, that's, that's the presentation.
Most approved.
Second.
Okay, any conversation, discussion?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
He's going to find Hayes.
There you, you're muted, son.
Hey, I'm sorry, it clicked off, I had to rejoin. Always up for a vote, Ms. Kitchell.
Yes, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
And Mr. Hayes has still left the meeting.
He's absent.
Okay, so six I see Ronays.
Okay. Item number ten, right-of-way use, Nick Tuttle, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you again, Ms. George. This item is actually not anything that you need to vote on tonight, but we wanted to bring this to your attention, because we will likely be entering into some, some memorandums of understanding MOUs with some fiber companies here in the very near future. We worked out a lot of details with them, but the city is getting more and more requests for, for private utility providers such as fiber providers and cable providers to utilize our city right-of-way, especially now that we have Facebook here in, in Gallatin. They're wanting to make sure they double down on their communications staying up and online. And so there are actually a couple of major routes that a couple of contractors have approached us about putting fiber in the ground in the city and state right-of-way around the city of Gallatin. And so we've, we've worked with Ms. Hamakali's office to try to develop MOUs to enter into with these folks. But we would also, we're also pursuing this idea of actually adopting a more structured ordinance that would dictate a little bit more about how our right-of-way can be used by outside users. And so really, the main two things that I want you to be aware of that we're putting into this MOU and that we would be bringing to you later to discuss are, first, if, if these private utility providers are using our right-of-way, we want to be sure that any work that the city needs to do within the right-of-way, we, we would just be able to direct that, that utility that they would need to relocate, and they would do that at their cost. And so I don't think we're going to have any problems with that one. But the, the second item is something that we may have a little bit more work to do on. And we feel like if it's a private utility that, that they would need to kind of pay their way to utilize a, a public facility such as right-of-way. And so we're working with M-TAS and talking with Metro Nashville about how they're handling these situations. But we think that there's, it, it's appropriate for us to charge either a monthly or an annual fee for the occupation of right-of-way by these private utilities. And so we're, we know that there are statutes in place that are very specific in what we can charge or what we cannot charge. And so there are limitations, so we couldn't just go out and say, oh, yeah, it's going to be a million dollars a foot, and they'd have to agree to that. So it's, it'll have to be something that's reasonable. And that's where, where all the research is going into right now on our side. And so I don't know if Ms. Hamakali wants to add anything to the conversation, but I'd love to give her an opportunity.
Now, Nick, I think you've done a great job of explaining that. Basically, any fee that we charge would have to be reasonable. That's basically the standard, and we are working with different municipalities to determine how they arrived at the fee that they're charging.
Ms. Haller, I have one question. If there were a fee access against this property, would that go to the general treasurer or would that go to a certain department?
I don't think we've worked that out.
Yeah. Within the ordinance.
Would, would these fees be negotiated annually? Or is it a fee that once we set it, we can't negotiate?
I think it would be a fee that we set in the ordinance, and so it would be that fee until the ordinance is amended. I mean, that's my view on it.
Okay.
So is there anything we need to do with this?
No, ma'am, not at this time, but I do see that Mr. Fenton has his hand raised. I don't know if you, sure if he wants to speak or not.
Well, thank you.
Doc Stewart does, too.
If I may, Councilman George, James Fenton. I'm supportive of, of a fee being established. I would just encourage it to be very reasonable. As the city council adopted the strategic plan for us to move towards technology and technology-related companies pulling fiber through our community, if we could light it up like a Christmas tree, so to speak, to make sure we have that connectivity, it will just enhance the future attraction of the jobs that we're looking for. So I, I just want to interject that. I am supportive of it. Everyone needs to pay their way. We just would love to make sure it's, it's a fee that's not onerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Someone else has their hand raised?
Doc Stewart does.
Next to it, okay. I'm sorry, I don't see that on my end.
If I do, it's an accident.
Okay, you did.
Okay, so on, we will just move on from here unless there's other discussion. Okay, item number eleven, ordinance number zero-two-one-zero-three-dash-nineteen appropriating fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents from Miracle Park Donations Revenue Fund to Miracle Products Park Expense Fund. David Brown.
He's on the phone.
Okay. Brown?
Yes, this is David Brown with the Parks Department. Yeah, you did a fine job. We're just moving some donation funds over to the expense account, so we can continue on with the Miracle Park.
Most approved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Kitchell.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yeah.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six I see Ronays.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item twelve, the financial reports for January. Ms. Nichols?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The January financial reports were included in your packet. Pleased to say that we are continuing to do well this year, even with all the COVID concerns. I did include the February sales tax graph for the last two pages. That shows the actual sales that occurred during the month of December, which would have been everyone doing their Christmas shopping. And as you can see from the report, we did very well for December. We collected a million one in state share or in local option sales tax for the month. So we've done very well, very pleased with all the departments and their spending, but our revenues coming in well is also a little preemptive for next month. We've already collected more than we budgeted for property tax this year. We were concerned that COVID may cause some delinquencies that we hadn't had in the past, but our property tax revenues have come in very well also.
Great job.
I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any conversation about this? Hey, I guess we have finished, there's nothing to approve here, correct?
No, correct.
Okay, we've completed, completed our, our agenda items, and we move on to other business. Does anyone have any business to discuss?
Mayor Brown does, I know.
Councilwoman George, may I go ahead?
Yes, please.
All right, well, first of all, I want to say congratulations on chairing your first meeting. You've done a lovely job.
Good job.
Good job.
You ought to get a chicken dinner for it.
It always feels rocky, but you've really done a nice job, so congratulations. And the second thing is, is I want to advise this council, I know that we've agreed to continue to meet virtually through the end of March, but at some point, we're going to be coming back together. We need to make the decision, not tonight, but we do need to make the decision as to whether we're going to continue to run all the meetings on Facebook and still use the Zoom platform, even if it's for a period of time in case we have public that doesn't feel comfortable meeting in person. So those are just some things you need to think about. And really, I'm asking you this now, because before we do convene again, you know, convene in person, our IT director and communications director will need to kind of know which direction we're going, so they, they can set up for that, to make sure that everything works and test accordingly. So I wanted to tell you guys that. And then finally, the only other thing I have this evening is I did want to discuss with you all, not necessarily discuss. As you know, Chief Victor Williams submitted his resignation, and so that leaves this council with obviously hiring a new fire chief, but it's also, we're going to need to appoint an interim fire chief. And I don't know how you wish to proceed with that. Typically, we've had Typically, we've had a second-in-command that could step into that role. In this situation, we have several people who are assistants at the fire department. But I was going to suggest to you all that we have, if you will, a call for interest so that anyone who may be interested in serving as interim chief to let me know potentially by this Friday, and then I could put it on the agenda to discuss next Tuesday and let you all vote on that, if that's.
That sounds great to me.
Sounds good to me, mayor.
A good idea.
I agree. Questions, then? I guess.
Do we need a motion?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, I should actually defer that to Ms. Hama Kali, so.
Need a motion on that.
Thank you. Is that it, Ms.? Is that it, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you. What about department heads? Do we have anybody that wants to bring anything to our attention?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Getting chalked up tonight.
Well, I have one more thing, or a couple more things. Just a moment, and I will see if I can find my little drawing here. Is that visible?
Yes.
Okay. Council members, we've been approached by the developer of the vintage at Baker's Crossing multifamily project that was approved last year, reapproved last year, and they are proposing, or if we're interested in donating some property to the city that could be used for a park or just preserved open space. It's located in the southwesterly portion of their property, which is adjacent to East Forker Camp Creek and Nashville Pike. So the east side of East Camp Creek and the north side of Nashville Pike is the property we're talking about. It's just to the west of Tulip Poplar Circle or Drive, Tulip Poplar Drive. And there's currently a small driveway that extends off Highway thirty-one E there. It goes into the property. It's only the southwest, and most of it's in a flood zone, so it's really not very useful for them. We do have a proposal to extend our greenway through that area, so it's just something for you to consider, and they've offered it if we are interested in maybe pursuing that. They want to ensure that as a result of any donation that they have, that it does not affect their density and their master plan, which it shouldn't, so.
Is it something that would have a lot of maintenance to it?
I doubt it. It will when we build the trail through that area eventually.
But I'm talking about now, while we're just waiting on it for years to come. Is there a lot of maintenance that we'd have to do on it?
I don't think so. I'd asked them if there's any environmental issues on the property, and they were not aware of any. So probably certainly needs a good-looking over and appraisal and things of that sort. But again, most of it is in a flood zone, so it's not, it can be developed for structures.
I'm talking as much about mowing and that kind of stuff as anything else. I just don't know what kind of money we have to spend on it from now to then, so. I mean, I would like to know that. I mean, I'm all for it. I'd love to take it, but I just want to be sure that we're not going to spend a ton of money on it right now waiting to do something with it, and I'm all for it, Bill. I just, I just got to ask those questions because, you know, our mowing guys are, they're busy, so I just want to make sure there's not a lot of maintenance. And Mayor Brown may have a solution. She's got her hand raised, so.
I think there are, there are some discussions happening. I know that David Brown has met with them as well, and we discussed a little bit at the department head meetings this morning. They're talking through particulars, you know, when they first asked me about it, I said, absolutely, if they'll develop it and maintain it, we will be happy to take it. But that's not a realistic expectation. I'm grateful that they are willing to consider donating it to us because it's, you know, it's right there across movie branch, and Nick did say, or Bill, you won, said that there is the opportunity to connect two parks underneath the bridge, so it could be really lovely. But you're right, Councilman Overton, we do need to understand what we're looking into.
And if somebody just checked it out between now and then, I mean, I'd love to take it, and I'd love to say yes, but somebody should check it out and see how much maintenance we're going to have to do on.
Somebody said David Brown has some great ideas for it.
That's good.
The only other things I would just want to mention is that we're still moving forward with our comp plan. Our consultants met with us here recently and talking about the character area, the land uses that will be applied to various properties, and that's consistent with what they had presented to you. I guess it was back in December, or is that when it was most recently? So we're closing that gap, and we're hoping to be able to have a draft to you here in the next month or so, month and a half. Also, we will be kind of following up on that with a proposal to, or requesting proposals from various consultants to start preparing a rewrite of our zoning code that would comply with our comp plan, our new comp plan, once that's adopted. And then lastly, T-Dot's moving forward with the consultant selection process for the Urban Transportation Planning Grant that I told you all about a couple of weeks ago that was awarded to Sumner County or all of the communities in Sumner County. So they will be looking to grab a consultant somewhere, one of six that they scheduled already and are reviewing through those proposals. And eventually, there will be an advisory committee that they will want to establish. So perhaps we'll be coming back to you again, asking for somebody to be appointed to that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I would imagine there's no one else on the line for department heads. If not, we're ready to adjourn. Anybody want to make that motion?
Most adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much. I appreciate all your time.
Good job, Alain.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Bye.